Good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I will call the order of the August 19th meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Gribius.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Wees. Commissioner Hay.
Here.
If you're able to stand, please do so and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
It stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will move into our citizens input portion of the meeting where members of the public may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
Morning.
Good morning. Please state your name and address.
Tony Johnson, Salina, Kansas.
Good morning.
9:00 AM again.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta get that changed. We have to get that changed. You say you want public input, but you hold it in the middle of the business day where the citizens. So it's almost like we're an inconvenience. So, and there's not even a Zoom link on the website.
We're hoping.
I had, I had to call last week to get zoomed in and I think it was Linda. She was very nice and got it to me. But then when I went, you know, I tried to speak and I was never queued to speak. So, we gotta get this in the afternoon after the 8 to 5.
And there's, that has been discussed over the, a lot of years. I know.
It's gonna be addressed today.
I hope. I hope. Also, just a reminder, I believe this is August 19th, 49 days past July 1st. That means if Hannah Bet had conducted her evaluation of proposals for the demolition of the county jail in an ethical and logical manner, the jail would have been demoed, we would have been done with it. But, and you all would have had $112,000 extra in your budget. But like they say, figures don't lie, but liars figure.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. At this time, we will move into our consent agenda which consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of counts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of county commission minutes July 15th, approval of county commission minutes July 22nd, approval of county commission minutes on July 22nd, excuse me, study session, approval of county commission minutes of August 5th study session, approval of county commission minutes on August 5th, approval of county commission minutes of August 8th study session, approval of county commission minutes of August 12th, approval of offer to purchase real estate, FY 25 fourth quarter juvenile budget amendment, FY 25 final juvenile agency case plan report, FY 25 final adult agency case plan report. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from this consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion as second to approve consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. We will move into action items.
Used truck purchase with Scott Abker, Rural Fire District Number 3 Chief.
Good morning, Mr. Abker.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. We would like to replace our truck in the Bavaria fire station. It's a 1977. We went and looked at a used 1995 Freightliner pumper tanker from Firemaster in St. Louis, Missouri last week and we feel like this is a super good truck. It's gonna replace that 1976 Ford we have in Bavaria Station. It's got a smaller tank and a smaller pump and this should be a much better fit for us. We feel like that truck in Springfield is an excellent vehicle, probably one of the best used trucks I've ever inspected. I can't find any evidence of corrosion or any damage or anything on this truck. It's been very well taken care of throughout its life. I don't know what department it was at before, but it's clear that they cared a lot for their equipment and we just feel like this is a pretty good purchase. We had a special board meeting on August the 12th and the board recommended going ahead with this purchase and purchase price is $68,000. $15,000 of that's gonna come from our fire district's budget line items and the remaining $53,000 will come from our special equipment fund. And that balance is $103,931.46. So, we would recommend making this purchase and we'd like to hear what you think.
Just a quick question. I, that tanker that you're replacing, is that, since it still does work, or is that something that you might want to just keep on hand? Just...
Probably not. One of the reasons we are replacing it is because it has a much smaller tank.
Right.
And due to its age, every year when we pump test it, the tech that comes to do the pump test, we cross our fingers and we pray that there isn't any plumbing that has enough corrosion to blow out or have a problem. And it's just, that age is just not worth us trying to do something more with.
I just wanted to ask.
No, I think it's a great question. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I commend the fire department for having something 1976. That is unbelievable. I mean, it's, it's still in operation, so.
Yeah, we were very proud of it. We went up to Beatrice, Nebraska and bought that mid, early 1990s. So, yeah, we, we've been pretty proud of that truck. It was way better than the 54 or 56 Ford we had back then.
It's impressive.
Yes. Okay. Any other comments from the commission? Any members of the public who'd like to speak? Oh, we'll bring you back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve RFA 2025-122 as presented.
Second. We have a motion as a second to approve RFA 2025-122 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Abker.
Thank you.
Next item.
Gary Sonez Foundation Grant Approval with Scott Abker, Rural Fire District Number 3 Chief.
Hello again.
Yeah. I'll tell you what, we're really proud of this opportunity. We, we have some folks on our department, as well as myself, that are just constantly searching for opportunities to apply for grants. This one became available. We, we found out that it's available and, and obviously it's something that they do every year, but we applied for this grant from the Gary Sonez Foundation and I'm probably not saying that name right and I apologize if he's listening, but anyway, we had, we had a grant approval or a grant approved by them for $45,000 for some hydraulic rescue tools, four sets of bunker gear and three used portable radios. And with this grant, that allows us to make that purchase. It's 100% funded grant. We don't have to match anything and it really is gonna be a huge asset to us. And I need to mention that, that Tyler Castile is very instrumental in getting, in applying for this grant, getting this for us and, and we're super proud to have had this opportunity.
Any other comments by the commission?
I, I just wanna commend you. I mean, anytime, and you can go out and write grants and you have the time to do that, awesome and very, very commendable. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I also concur with that. It's, you know, if, if the public could really realize how much our, our people and our, you know, that in Celine County that go out and apply for grants and, you know, that takes off some of the tax burden off of, off of the taxpayer and our people do a really good job of trying to get as many grants as they can get and have the opportunity to get. So, again, like she said, thank you very, very much for going out and pursuing that. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve RFA 2025-113.
Second.
We have a motion as a second to approve RFA 2025-113 as presented. Mr. Chair.
Oh.
Public comment?
Oh, yes. I'm, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Yes. Any comments by the public? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-113 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioner.
Thank you.
And before you leave, I just, one other question. How, how is the new station out of Brookville coming along?
Oh, it's, it's growing great. We expect to do our punch list walkthrough next week on the 28th, Thursday, the 28th. And they're very close to being done and I think we'll be very close to being, occupying it here, probably the first part of the next month.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
It looks good.
It does look good. I drove out there too. Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. I like it.
Yeah.
Okay, next.
Revisions of the bylaws of the Celine County Property Crime Compensation Board with John Reynolds County Attorney.
Good morning, folks.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Reynolds.
This matter, RFA 2025-107, basically is a revision to the guidelines and policies of the victim, Crime Victims Reparation Board. The changes, or one is the name of the thing. They want to name it the Property Crime Compensation Board. Whatever that's worth. Second part of that is modifying the required membership. Before, one, either I or one of my staff had to be on this board and frankly, we just don't have time for it. In order for them to move forward, they need to have people that can show up at these meetings and make these decisions. So, we would ask for a modification. There's zero budget impact. It's a matter of naming rights and then how they operate.
Okay. Any comments by the commission?
No, I just know in years past that that fund is utilized and it works through your office well. So, I appreciate that.
Any comments by the public? If not, I'll bring it back for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve RFA 2025-107 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion as a second to approve RFA 2025-107 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Have a great day. Next.
Transfer of Funds from Register of Deeds Technology Fund with Michelle Newell, Register of Deeds.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning. Yes. So, I would like to transfer funds from the Register of Deeds Technology Fund into the Land Records Technology Fund to fund the Eagle Flight for the GIS mapping for the years of '26, '27, and '28. Fifty, up to $50,000 each year to fund that, basically.
Any, any questions?
Michelle, I gotta, I gotta say I had a couple of questions. Now, the techno, what, what exactly is the technology fund for the Register of Deeds? What is that fund usually? I mean, it said that you have, you know, what, $149,000 in that fund. What's that fund used for?
Anything that pertains to real estate, preserving records, recording records, basically anything that the Register of Deeds needs to, to do that.
So, it's not utilized very often, then?
Well, I inherited this amount. We collect fees for that, for things, bigger things like Rebecca had used some of those funds to get all of our indexing done through a third-party company. That, you know, requires a little bit of funding. So, we kinda, she's kinda worked to save that for that fund, getting equipment like plat scanners, copiers, anything that would help preserve the records of the Register of Deeds Office.
So, how much does that fund grow every year?
Roughly about $50,000 a year.
So, so it looks like you'll be coming to us again next year and asking for another transfer?
Well, I'm hoping that with the way I worded it, like each year for '26, '27, and '28.
You're asking for three years.
For three years.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Each year.
So, and that's $50,000 to cover that each year?
Yes. In my understanding, it's roughly $38,000 to do that flight. But that, you know, inflation things, you just don't know.
Can you, so if you don't spend it all, will it go back into the technology fund or will you leave it there for a safeguard?
I would leave it there for a little while for a safeguard. Right now, I don't have any big projects planned for, for the Deeds Office. Rebecca's kinda taken care of a lot of that before I came in, so.
And can you expand just a little bit so I understand what you're moving it to, to, to purchase or to fund?
So, the, my Register of Deeds Technology Fund to the Lands Records Technology Fund is to fund anything that pertains to real estate. So, property, mapping, GIS.
You said that earlier. Thank you. Thanks.
So, we use that GIS mapping quite a bit in our office to help us kind of figure out where we're supposed to be in the land records if we can't, you know, sometimes legal descriptions are insanely crazy. So, we try to use that. I know a lot of other departments use that GIS mapping as well. So, getting that updated is very important for several departments in the county to, you know.
Yeah. Great.
To fund that. And I know that the budget's kind of constraining with some of us. So, if I can help in any way, this is just when we like to contribute to that.
Thank you.
Because I like using it.
And I do see the appraiser here. So, I, and I do know back from the days that the appraiser's office utilizes that air photography extensively. I mean, in a, in a big way. So, and a lot of the departments do, like you said. But thank you for that transfer. But do I have any other comments by the commission? Anyone from the public?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we adopt Resolution 2025-118 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion as a second to approve RFA 2025-118 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next.
Resolution adopting oversized and overweight permit requirements with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, commissioners.
I'm getting my glasses. I hate getting old.
Oh, please.
So, um.
Yeah.
Phil.
Might as well just sit on down. I can't believe you said that.
I'm having a hard time going through the transition. So, anyway, let's get back to business.
Yeah.
So, back on November 4, 2003, the Celine County Commission adopted Resolution 03-1810. And this resolution established a permit to move buildings through the county. However, you know, there are non-building loads that move through the county, you know, that are oversized and heavier than legal loads and we don't really have a mechanism in place to permit those loads. So, Resolution 03-1810 did create a permit without any regulations. And so, therefore, I created a policy 2025-101 called Oversized and Overweight Load Permit Requirements. This policy provides updated and comprehensive requirements for permitting these oversized and overweight loads. And therefore, the building moves will be incorporated into this policy and therefore Resolution 03-1810 can be repealed. And so, just to summarize Policy 2025-101, I start off with actually describing what is an oversized and overweight load. And all of these requirements are coming from the state statutes. You know, if you read state statutes, they're very difficult to read. And so, I'm trying to pull out the information that pertains to Celine County and, and loads on county, county roads. So, to start off with, an oversized load is a width anything wider than eight and a half feet, a height taller than 14 feet, a length, first is a trailer length over 59 and a half feet, or a combination of the tractor-trailer length over 68 and a half feet. And then for an overweight is a wheel load exceeding 10,000 pounds or an axle load exceeding 20,000 pounds. But if you have a tandem axle, you can go up to 34,000 pounds. And then the total weight of the vehicle, the combined vehicle is, can't be over 85,500 pounds. This policy also defines a permit requirement. It does set a $40 permit fee and this is an increase. Currently, the building move permit is a $25 permit fee. It is defines insurance requirements. It outlines the requirements during the move. It explains the process of an object must be moved. And here, I'm gonna refer into, you know, traffic signs, mailboxes, or even vegetation removal. If they've gotta, you know, take down a tree, you know, it kinda goes through that process as well. And then it provides amended requirements for traffic control and warning signs. All permits through the Road and Bridge Department are online here through our website. And so, if this policy is approved, we would have to create a permit for that. And then we also have to update our county codes. So, Chapter 5, which is regarding buildings, it does codify Resolution 03-1810 and it references it in other sections of that chapter. And then Chapter 11 deals with roads and bridges. So, with the adoption of Policy 2025-101, these chapters will have to be updated. So, in your packet, I did include a Resolution 25-2433 which adopts this policy. It repeals Policy Resolution 03-1810 and modifies the codes. But since I've submitted these documents for this meeting, I have had a couple calls. One very long-distance call from Commissioner Wees with some questions about this policy. And one of the things that has come up is ag equipment. You know, there's nothing in this policy that exempts ag equipment. And so, you know, again, the, the policy is supposed to summarize the state statutes. And in the state statutes, there is some exemptions for ag equipment. That is not in this policy. So, something that I am gonna recommend is that we table this. Let me add those exemptions in there because I think it's, it would be best to make it clear, you know, that what's, what's exempt and then come back at the next board meeting, which is on the 2nd, I believe, September 2nd. So, so just to go through the steps for a request for action, the terms for action would be to approve the Resolution 25-2433, deny the resolution, or suggest modifications. And staff, I recommend that we make some changes to the resolution, table it, and then come back on the 2nd. As far as a budget increase, or budget impact, it does increase the fee from a $25 building move permit to a $40 fee. A $40 fee is the maximum fee that's in the statutes that we can, we can require for a permit. So, are there any questions on this?
I just, Phil, do we have to have a, a public hearing to repeal any resolution that we, I mean, if, if, maybe I'm not saying that right. If we're gonna repeal a resolution, we don't need any type of a hearing to repeal that, to get public comment before we repeal that? Does that make sense? I'm sorry.
A repeal of an ordinance or resolution is exactly like adoption of an, of a ordinance or resolution. So, unless there was a public hearing in 2003, there wouldn't be one required.
Okay.
I mean, you take public comment anytime you're doing a resolution, but.
Okay. And it's in the resolution that I've attached. You know, I'm, I'm not reading it this time around since we're gonna, hopefully, we'll, my suggestion is to table it. And then at that time, I'll read it and it does repeal that resolution, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Any comment from the public? Okay.
Tony Johnson, Salina. As somebody in trucking, I pull an end dump. I'm always legal, by the way. But is this a single-time permit, just once? Because what I'm thinking of, if a contractor has to move multiple pieces of equipment, you know, across the county or whatever, does he have to buy a permit each trip? And then who's gonna enforce this? We don't have county DOT here, so I don't know. I mean, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just saying, who's gonna enforce the policy? So.
Thank you.
This is a single-trip policy. I mean, we can, and I believe the statutes, I have to go back and look. It does allow for like an annual permit, you know, for that. But it's, it's, what just gets difficult on an annual permit is that we really need to be notified when things are being moved. What just gets difficult on an annual permit is that we really need to be notified when things are being moved. Um, you know, especially it's, it's the weight things in our, in our, our bridges, um, in our structures and, um. You know, and another thing that this policy does is for whoever is doing the hauling, you know, they're supposed to call us, you know, both a day or two before they do the move so that we can let them know what construction's going on and what kind of issues they might run into, you know? And so it's also for their, their benefit. Um, but if you would like, I, we, I can add some language in there for a, um, annual permit versus a single trip, um, and I had to look into how to do that. But, um, if that's the wishes of the board, I can add that to the policy.
Well, and, and I would never have thought of that. I, I had come across the ag issue, but this here where you have a contractor that has, if, if, yeah, if he's even got a, pretty much a, just like the county, if they have a excavator, you know, it's, it's a wide load, you gotta do this. And if you have a contractor that's moving an excavator around the, the county multiple times a year, it's like, I could see where that'd be a great benefit to have a annual permit on top of that. I mean, to me, I could see a big benefit.
The downside is just them not telling us when it's going to happen.
But, but can't you, I mean, so I'm looking at this as like, it's kind of like the burn permit. You're supposed to call in every time you do a burn. Now, there is those people, I got a feeling that don't call every time they do a little burn. But as, as a, a contractor, I would think that they understand and they know that on this permit, it says that, hey, you always call before you do this. Same conversation.
Yeah, you know, and, and going back to the comment too about, uh, you know, the, who's going to enforce it?
Yes.
Um, that, that's difficult, um, you know, and it's, it's more of a, um, you know, when we know what's happening? You know, like when we had that large transformer move through, you know, and there was lots of steps involved in that. You know, we were out there watching and, and making sure everything was good. Um, but it's, it's really if there's something that happens, you know, if they damage the structure or if they, they do something. Um, you know, we've, we've got a, a permit that says this is what they're supposed to do and they didn't do it. Um, and so it would be a lot easier to, to get damages, I would think. I'm not a lawyer, but I would think it would be easier.
Well, do you have any, and we've already done public comment.
Yep.
Um, I would move that we table resolution 25-2433 so that Justin can thank you, Mr. Commissioner Wies, for finding some of that and add those pieces in and also look at addressing Mr. Johnson's concerns.
Second.
We have a motion to table, uh, resolution 25-2433 as presented. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mater. Number six. Oh, I'm sorry. Next item.
Bid award for magnesium chloride containment structure with Justin Mater County Engineer.
Good morning again. You're not done with me, not even close, so.
I was done with you when you brought up the age thing, so I'm officially done, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my job.
Yeah, entertain me by listening to my next request for action. So the, uh, the road and bridge department utilizes magnesium chloride as a liquid de-icer to pre-wet rose salt during winter maintenance operations. Uh, this practice improves the effectiveness of salt application and enhances roadway safety during snow and ice events. Currently magnesium chloride is stored in two aging above-ground storage tanks that have become brittle and are nearing the end of their service life. While magnesium chloride is not considered a hazardous material by the EPA, the Kansas Department Health and Environment regulates above-ground storage tanks under both state environmental statutes and the spill prevention, control, and countermeasure framework. KDHE requires secondary containment for all above-ground storage tanks with a capacity greater than 55 gallons to mitigate the risk of environmental contamination due to accidental spills or tank failures. In compliance with these regulations, the engineering department has designed a reinforced concrete secondary containment structure to house two new 3,000 gallon replacement tanks. This, um, system is 17 feet wide, 20 feet, uh, 25 feet long, and two feet deep, providing a total contamination volume of 6,360 gallons. So it's just literally just a, a concrete bathtub is really what it is. Uh, on August 5th, bids were open for the construction of the concrete containment structure. Reese Construction was the sole bidder and submitted a bid in the amount of $46,396.41. This project ensures compliance with KDHE regulations and protects both county and, and the environment from potential de-icing material spills. All terms for action would be to accept the bid from Reese Construction in the amount of $46,396.41 or to reject Reese's bid and direct staff to the wishes of the board. Uh, staff, um, we recommend to accept the bid from Reese Construction in the amount of $46,396.41. And the cost of this project will be taken from our capital improvement program. Questions?
Just a quick question, cause I, I had brought this up and it's, it's been brought up to us commissioners here just recently about the way the bid openings go and, and all this happens. I look at this sheet and it says that the Reese Construction was the sole bidder and blah, blah, blah. And understanding that, it's like, how many applic-, I mean, how many sources did we go out for bids?
Uh, well, so we sent the request for bid to the same number that we send to our reinforced concrete box projects, and it's probably 10 to 15. So my, my guess is that the, the project is just not big enough for an outside contractor to come in and to, to do the job.
Okay, and, and I, I know that, so, but now something that I would like to see, and I know it's asking way too much, but it's like, like here, on your sheet here that says the engineer's estimate and the Reese Construction, I think it'd be beneficial for the county commissioners and anybody else out there to see, okay, here's who we sent the bid out for, and it's all zeros underneath. That way we know that you went out for bids, because I look at this going, okay, did we really go out for bids with anybody else? We're just taking, I, and I, I don't want to say that this is a, a deal. I'm just saying, maybe it might be to cover everyone's.
I mean, I, I could sure add a list underneath it there. Um, that's, that's not a problem. But even, you know, using the, the DemandStar program, I mean, that sends it out nationwide, you know? So, you know, what I send Hannah is a list of contractors that I think would potentially, um, be interested or does that type of work in Kansas, really what it is. It's who does that work in Kansas. I send that to her, and so therefore she sets it up, and I'm not sure how she does her magic, but she sends out the request for bid directly to those contractors. But then we also, um, advertise in the, um, Kansas Contractors Association, they've got a plan room. Um, there's one or two other plan rooms, um, that we send it to that they also advertise. Uh, Dodge Reports is another one, um, you know, that we send it to. So this, it does reach a wide, um, you know, wide, um, wide area, I mean, really nationwide. But I, it's, it's not a big deal to add the list of contractors that we, we send.
And there, as soon as I, as soon as you explain that to me, it's kind of like, okay, it would be hard for you to go out and say, okay, hey, the Dodge Report or this plan room has 250 applicants that went out and searched this.
Right.
You couldn't put all them on here. So I understand. So if that's the only bid you receive, then that's why you do this. Okay. Uh, kind of answers that.
Sure.
Question. Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Any comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve RFA 2025-116 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-116 as presented. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Approval of on-call professional survey services agreement with Justin Mater County Engineer.
I'm back. Here we go again.
One more time.
Yes, so, uh, the road and bridge department has experienced a significant staffing gap with the recent resignation of the assistant county engineer and county surveyor. Uh, despite continuous advertising since April and direct outreach to qualified individuals. So I've got a list of everybody who has, really does survey in Sling County, um, and I've, I've contacted them directly. Um, the county has received no viable applicants for a county surveyor position. This position is critical to the county's ability to execute road and bridge projects as Kansas law requires a county surveyor to be a licensed professional land surveyor in the state of Kansas. Uh, statutory and operational responsibilities include conducting and overseeing boundary, topographic, and section corner surveys, preparing and testing, or preparing and reviewing legal descriptions for right-of-way acquisition, reviewing and approving Platts for, uh, compliance with, uh, KSA 58-2005, and maintaining the county's section corner monumentation system. Without these functions, Sling County cannot legally or efficiently complete infrastructure projects. So to bridge this gap, I'm requesting the approval of an on-call professional survey services agreement with Schwab Eaton. Uh, a formal, uh, request for proposal was issued in June, and Schwab Eaton was selected after a competitive evaluation. And so we did get two, uh, proposals back. Um, we created a committee to evaluate those proposals and we scored them. And Schwab Eaton was, um, we felt like Schwab Eaton was, was the best fit for Sling County. So under the proposed agreement, Schwab Eaton will locate, re-establish, and set public land survey system monuments, section corners as needed, collaborate with county staff to perform required background and historical road record research, prepare legal descriptions for acquisition of permanent and temporary right-of-way, and then review subdivision Platts and survey Platts for compliance with, um, applicable Kansas statutes. Uh, these services will be provided on an hourly basis, ensuring flexibility and, uh, cost control. So going back to the subdivision plat and survey reviews. So since Wayne left us to go work for Lyon County, um, you know, we, we, um, the commission approved to, one, um, we are having John Harvey with the city surveyor to review and, um, sign off on the subdivision Platts within the city of Slyna. And then all surveys outside of city limits, um, the surveyor has to find their own reviewing surveyor, um, you know, out, out there to do their own review before it's recorded with the registered deeds. Um, however, so in, in this, um, on-call surveying agreement, I did include that, um, work, but I don't necessarily, um, intend to change what we've already set up. So I wanted to make sure that that work was in the agreement if we decided that we wanted to have, uh, have them do their own, or our own review, um, for that. So, so that's really not going to change much. Um, all terms for action would be to approve the contract from Schwab Eaton. Do not approve the contract, um, understanding that the survey dependent projects will be delayed until, until a county surveyor is hired. Staff recommends to approve the agreement with Schwab Eaton. Their qualifications, local knowledge, and proven track records prove them the most compatible part, uh, partner to fill the county surveyor's duties. Um, as far as a budget impact, um, this agreement is an hourly rate basis, uh, you know, so there's, it's not a lump sum. Um, however, most of the costs will be charged to active road and bridge project funds. You know, so if we're going to be hiring them to do section corner work or write legal descriptions, it's for a project. You know, whether it's a road project or a, a, a bridge replacement project. So the cost of this agreement is going to come out of like the 124 account, which is our, um, one mil account, our special road improvement. Um, you know, for road improvement projects, or if it's a bridge replacement or project, it'll come out of our 125, uh, account, which is our two mil. However, there could be rare maintenance-related survey costs, you know, that, um, might have to come out of a budget line item, you know? So if we're, uh, you know, the maintenance department wants to rebuild a road and they want to know exactly where the right-of-way is at, um, then we would, then we need to hire them to find section corners, so we would know exactly where the right-of-way is. In that case, then it would come out of a budget, budgeted line item. Um, however, we do have some unfulfilled, um, salary money, you know, from the, um, the open position with the county surveyor and assistant, um, county engineer. And I've estimated that's going to be, that's approximately $72,000 of unused salary for this year. Um, and that does not include any of the fringe benefits, um, and so this can help offset some of those costs as well. Questions?
Okay, just, you said this is going to be an agreement on an hourly rate based. You said you got two proposals. Was Schwab the low?
They, they were, um, you know, so I, I asked for hourly rates, and their hourly rates were lower than the other, um, company that who submitted a proposal, yes, significantly.
I, I, I think that would have been a good deal on this one here if you only had two of them to see which, you know, see that what the hourly rates were and how you, uh, how you decided to go with, uh, with Schwab on this. So I mean, just to, uh, you know, I just think that would help to be able to see that.
Yeah, and, and the, the licensed land surveyor for Schwab Eaton, it's, he is, um, highly regarded. Um, you know, even with, with, um, Wayne, who was in my office who left, and, and Jake in my office, who's, um, you know, does a lot of our survey. They, they really respect him, uh, you know, for what he does, um, you know, he wants to do things right. Um, and I think, cause, cause another important thing is that they're willing to work with my office. You know, so I have staff that can do a lot of the work, a lot of the research and, and, um, you know, to, to help minimize some of the extra costs on that. And so, you know, you need to work with a company who's willing to work with us.
All sounds good. I was just curious, um, how long has the position been open and any idea why we're not able to fill it? I know.
So Wayne left, I think it was around April. I can't remember when his last day was made. I think it was towards the end of May, actually, I think is when it was. But there is just a huge shortage of, um, licensed surveyors. I, it's, it's a problem. It's a huge problem. Um, they're, they're just not out there. People aren't becoming licensed. Um, you know, it, it takes eight years to be licensed. You know, and so it's, it's, it's a challenge. There's just not very many of them out there. And I, actually, I just got an, an email this morning. Shawnee County is, their surveyor's looking to retire and, and she's really concerned that there's not going to be anyone to fill that position. And mainly it's, a lot of it's salary.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so you, you've got surveyors, licensed land surveyors working for consultants, you know, but they're, they're making, if you include, you know, their salary, their overtime. You know, even they get a per diem, but if they can live off baloney sandwiches, they can make money off there, you know, they get bonuses. Um, you know, but they are worked hard, um, and they're living out of a suitcase. And my hope was that, you know, we find someone that's tired of living out of a suitcase. Um, but we're just, no, nobody's applying. And, and we're not the only one. I mean, McPherson County has had a, uh, county surveyor position open for, I bet it's over two years now. In Butler County, they've had an open position there for, uh, over a year, and, and nobody's applying.
So will you continue the contract? How long's the contract in effect? Do you have a?
It, it's a, it's a yearly contract, um, but I think there's a clause in there that we could extend, um, for another year if, if we chose to, so.
Is there a clause in here, excuse me, but is there a clause in here that if, if you happen to find somebody to fill that position, can you terminate this?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this, this is an on-call, so they, they only work when we call them and say, hey, we need your help.
Gotcha, okay.
And so, yeah, if we, if we hire someone, then yeah, we just won't ever call them.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments from the commission? Any comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve.
Can I have a motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve RFA 2025-123 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-123 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Now you're done with me.
Human Resources Quarterly Update with Marilyn Lemar, Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, commissioners. Justin, I feel his pain.
Yeah.
Uh, this interval is mid-May to mid-August. Um, during this time, we've had 18 new hires, 24 individuals that have transferred or promoted to a different position, um, 15 that are no longer employed. Uh, this quarter's turnover rate is approximately 4.4%. Uh, the safety committee activities that occurred during this time, we reviewed five injury reports. We inspected the health department. There were no time-offs, prizes awarded for safety suggestions that quarter. Miscellaneous activities, K-Work staff did inspect the sheriff's office on June 27th. With 77 items passed, they had one deficiency, which were spray bottles that were not labeled. They fixed it on. that were not labeled. They fixed it on-site and corrected that immediately. This will have a positive effect on our underwriting and safety score for our annual renewal. We processed the annual PCORI fee, which stands for Patient-Centered Outcomes Research Institution, or Institute Fee. This is a fee that we pay annually for our health plan. We completed one year of supervisor Sunday emails. These are delivered to all supervisors on various topics. I do it on Sunday mornings. Anybody that does have a supervisory role, they receive this as short little reads, anything from time clock plus to family medical leave, just different supervisor challenges. We began an all-employee communication email strategy that will hit all employees, will hit on some employee benefit-related topics, or frequently asked questions that we do receive. Yesterday, we opened our open enrollment for insurance. We do have a flat renewal, glad to say that, with our health and prescription. We have a small increase of 3.5% to our dental plan, flat renewal on vision, and then based on favorable claims and utilization, and this favorable renewal, we are going to be processing another premium holiday for the current plan year in September. We'll also do a first premium holiday in our new plan year. That plan year begins 10/1. So for each premium holiday, that does provide approximately $52,000 of relief for employees, and it also provides $289,000 in employer relief for each one of those premium holidays. So the employer, Saline County, and the building authority who's on our plan, both benefit from that. Plans moving forward, we'll close out our open enrollment on September 12th and begin to process those changes for the October 1 plan year. Going to participate in the Business Continuity Workshop with Michelle Wise on September 30th, and we're going to share our HR Continuity of Operation Plan activities that we've been doing. We'll continue plans for our in-service training day that's on October 13th. Fill vacant positions. Right now, we're sitting on 14 vacancies that we are recruiting for. Budget update, when I wrote this, this was based on nine months into our plan year. I did just receive the reports yesterday, so this is now with 10 months into our health plan year. We're running at a favorable loss ratio of 88.3%. So anything under 100 is great. With nine months, or 10 months into our dental, we're running at 97.3%. The 2025 budget is running at 56%, which is in line with our historical operations. But as we have some in-service activities occur, that's going to level out to a normal balance later in the year. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marilyn. Have a good day.
Next.
Appraiser Update with Sean Robertson, County Appraiser.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. You know, I normally come to you every six months with a department update, and I do have some things to update you on that have happened over the last six months, but also mix in some historical information for you as well. You probably know that the Appraisers Office Oversight Agency is the Property Valuation Division of the Department of Revenue, and we get graded every year on our performance, including accuracy evaluations, our documentation of our analysis, and then meeting statutory deadlines. So all, if an appraiser's office falls below a certain score, the state can come in and take over the office. We've never been close to that ever happening. However, this year is the first year in my tenure, and I believe ever, that we have received a perfect 100 score from Property Valuation Division. So that was a big thing to celebrate in our office. The number of informal hearings, when people get their valuation notices in, in the spring, they can appeal their value and have a hearing in our office and present information about why they think their value should be changed. One interesting thing that has happened there is this year was the lowest number of hearings that we've had in 10 years, and it's about 44% below the long-term average of ones that we've had. Now, after that step, taxpayers can appeal their value onto the Board of Tax Appeals. And since 2022, we have maintained a 96% success rate defending our values at the Board of Tax Appeals, which just lends some more credence to the accuracy of our values and us having the documentation to back those up. Some staff changes that have occurred and might occur in the future. We've instituted a career ladder for our appraisers, so they don't have to wait for an open position in order to move up. Now, what this does is allows those people to advance up in, in grade based on merit, whether that's education, testing, or experience. Also, our office has taken over the mail duties. I'll get into how we were able to do that here in a minute. Currently, we are also looking at a way to take the mail machine into our office and get that done, but there's not a lot of space. So our plans and budget are closely related. Over the last several years, there've been a lot of legislative changes, regulatory changes from property valuation that have allowed us to reduce staff and reallocate some resources and reduce our non-salary budget. And that's part of the reason we were able to take on those mail duties, was being relieved of some of those duties statutorily. However, there's also 1,000 more real estate parcels in Saline County than there were five years ago, mostly due to plating new subdivisions and new houses going in. So we have, have to reallocate some of our resources in order to collect that data, and there's also obviously more building, more building permits, and more transfers going on that we have to take care of as well. But anyway, since I started in the office, which is nearly a quarter of a century ago now, we used to have 15 full-time and two part-time employees. Now we're at 13 full-time and no part-time employees. So we've able, we've been able, again, not just by becoming more efficient in our office, but also legislative and regulatory changes, we've been able to do that. And kind of along those same lines, our non-salary budget is 25% lower now than it was 15 years ago. As far as budget and expenditures right now, slightly higher right now compared to this time a year ago, but that is almost solely due to education being taken by staff in new positions, and we've prepaid for some of those classes on down the road. But we are, we'll certainly be under our budget for 2025. So.
All right. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah. Any, any comments by the commission?
Thank you. Can you just briefly elaborate on the mail system that your office took on, and, I mean, for the whole county? I mean, I guess I don't quite understand that. I just, yeah.
Essentially for, if I can defer to the county administrator, but essentially for the entire building, we do the incoming and outgoing mail for the building.
Can you elaborate on that, Phil, please?
Sure. Yes. So that was a, historically a function of the Commissioner's Office. And so there, when we were in 217, there was a mailroom that was located sort of right beside us. And it was Linda at the time who went in there, and that, as Sean said, it's the mail for all county departments, sort of. The sheriff's office has their own post office box, but like Expo, Community Corrections, if they get mail, it generally comes here and gets distributed out. And then it's also for the city of Salina. So anything that they have going in or out, they pay us for that. There is a, a revenue stream that comes from the city, the building authority, other outside agencies, Community Corrections contributes because they're grant-funded. So, yeah, so at the time that the great move happened, we, you know, Sean was talking about having some excess capacity in his office, and we were looking at restructuring duties. So they took on the ma, it's physically located in our office, but their staff comes over twice a day and does the function. And then that has allowed now Tanya to have some of her time freed up. The plan was to have her working with Jamie some, but that has actually turned into working two days a week over in HR. So.
So the county's maintained all services with less and moved things around because of less staffing and less availability, and so you're taking on, your office is taking on that responsibility, and it looks like a lot of offices are sharing staff or sharing responsibilities to make up for the budget shortfalls. Is that a correct summary?
I wouldn't characterize it as due to the budget shortfalls. I would characterize it as due to, as Sean referenced, they've had statutory changes that have allowed, there's just stuff they don't have to do anymore in their office, but they didn't want to lay somebody off. So they absorbed a new function, and then that freed us up to do stuff for other people. I would say that's, that all occurred prior to and separate from any budget conversations.
Impressive. Thank you. Thank you for stepping up. I appreciate that. And everybody else that steps up and does those things.
Thank you.
Well, and congratulations on your 100%. I mean, that's got to be a great windfall for the whole county to, to know that you're right on target. That's a good deal. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Final, excuse me, Final Review of 2026 Budget Prior to Hearing with Philip Smith-Haines, County Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioner. So we have our hearing for revenue neutral rate and adoption of the 2026 budgets for the county and the seven rural fire districts that is scheduled for Tuesday, September 9. We are required, of course, to publish the budget 10 days in advance of that hearing, and so that deadline is coming up. And so the commission has had extensive conversations. We earlier, you all reviewed minutes from a number of different meetings, including two special meetings that were called really to discuss various parts of the budget. So last Tuesday, you took action on this is sort of where we've landed. But because we had had one of those special meetings the prior Friday, did not have time to give you the entire budget. Just, there was just one sheet attached last Tuesday. So I wanted to give you the whole budget package one more time in case anybody sees anything else that needs to be changed prior to publication. So not asking for any action. This is simply informational, but if there are any further changes that the commission would like to see, this is your opportunity to do so. Of course, at the hearing, you would be allowed to go down, but not up.
Any comments? Any questions by the commission?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next.
Commissioner's comments.
I have two, so I'll go first. One is the comment Mr. Johnson made just earlier this morning. I've read the information, and I looked at that, and to me, we don't publish the link. I did my due diligence and spoke with our county administrator on why COVID thing, then it just went off. But to me, I would like to get a consensus that we will publish link every week or whenever we do have meetings. I feel like if the commissioners themselves can zoom in, we should have our public be able to zoom in. So I don't think we need a vote, but a consensus. There's three of us here today that, or four, that we could start publishing that effective at our next meeting on the 2nd of September. That would be my comment.
And I want to thank you, because it's like, I didn't realize it was not being published out there. I mean, I thought it's another one of those, haven't used it. So I just assumed. But anyway, I, I'm behind that 100%.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you. And the other one is, we've already discussed this at our study session on the 8th of August, but we just need a consensus that it's coming up time to do the tire pickup with the Saline County Farm Bureau, and we agreed to take it out of the 25 contingency fund. I'm looking at Phil to make sure I'm saying this right. The 2025 contingency fund, Commissioner Contingency Fund, $10,000 to support that project. Again, we know the next year's completely unknown, but we're for 26, but we know that we'd like to do that, and they are asking, I think they reached out to Justin about it, and he couldn't respond. So I just am seeking a consensus that we are still in agreement for that and to get that out there.
Yep. Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
Anyone else? Anything else? Okay. Next.
Announcements.
Just a reminder, it's been referenced a couple of times, but the next commission meeting will be on Tuesday, September 2. There will not be a commission meeting next Tuesday on the 26th.
Okay. Anything else?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn. We're in the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned.